Let's call this meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM, December 18th, 2024, the Dune City City Council Regular Session. It looks like everyone is here tonight. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda in front of you. Any proposed revisions, changes?
Yes, actually, the new business item B is no longer necessary.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. All right, any motion approved agenda?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, go ahead, yeah, please.
Are we going to continue with the water committee?
We continued it to not a date specific. Did you want to talk about it tonight?
I just wanted to ask Joe before Lee was because he was the one it was contingent on.
Well, then, please ask him.
So is that all right to put that in the agenda?
Yeah, we continued it. On the last, so it's technically old business. Yeah, go ahead, pick something. We'll put that as D or the now C. Okay, water committee? Okay. Any other changes? Seeing none, could I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
Seven.
Seven.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Consent agenda, we have meeting minutes from November 20th and December 4th. Anybody have comments on meeting minutes? In your packet.
I did change that signature line that I had in for it on the November 20th.
Gotcha, or?
Yeah, for my council president.
Okay. Anyone else, anything else? Seeing none, okay, I'll go on to the next item. We have bills from November 10th to December 10th and receipts from November 10th to December 10th and profit and loss statement from November 10th to December 10th. Any questions or comments on those?
Again, I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Just on the profit and loss on the water area, I just wanted to make, kind of make note that we've ordered 13 meters in the past month.
Okay. And then, I already got my question answered, but on the first page, the friend's wife ended, we had West Coast Media. That was the last bill for the old web hosting, so that we won't have any more of those charges, correct?
Sure.
Right, all right. All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'd like a motion to approve consent agenda.
So?
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous as well. The next is announcements of course, plans.
Yes, we just had the Science and Water shit council just would like to know if we would like to renew our membership for the new year, and it is $50.
Any discussion?
I'm positive.
Is that the way? I think so. Is that your motion?
If I move, we continue with $50.
All right.
My second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed, yeah, okay.
And then another thing is we just received a health alert. I guess they're, pertussis or wippenkoff is showing a lot of signs in the Lane County area, and so just a health advisory. So we'll be taking note of that.
Now that we're all packed in here?
Right.
Okay, thank you. All right, item seven is citizen input on items not discussed on this agenda. We've got a number of speakers. First up is Jeannie Jackson.
Well, I had just spoken to Lila, and she explained what's going on this evening. So actually, I think I would choose to speak if I could when you're talking about elections or election results.
Why don't you go ahead right now? Because the election results are up to us. They're certified by Lane County. I was just going to make the sort of the final announcement. Go ahead if you have a comment.
And she had explained that to me. So I guess what I would like to do is at some point have a meeting with either you or Lila to talk about some of these candidates. And I was really looking forward to being able to always asking me to volunteer for things. I would have been happy to be on the committee to select the new councillors because I'm here many, many years. I know some things that some of you don't know, and I wanted to share them with you. So I don't think this is the time or place because I just, my husband nearly standing up for me at a planning commission meeting, I'm in trouble. We both got thrown out being told we were too personal. I don't know why it's personal when we say something, but people can say anything but much about us. And it was just a bad experience. And I'll be talking to you both later about it. This doesn't seem like the time or place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Geneva Jackson.
Well, I'd like to talk about the survey because I keep hearing about it when I go to various meetings. And I think it's a good idea to do one, but I'm really not so sure that we have received. It was a very good survey or conducted very well and that we are really looking at the results the way we should. The survey was poorly designed and unscientific. Was rolled out quickly with numerous citizens reporting that the website crashed or they got timed out before, and then they finally gave up. It appears to have been done for maybe some non-transparent outcomes. It wasn't sent to everyone and lacked appropriate notice or a really comprehensive participation. Such a survey should not be considered as representative of the majority of residents' opinions. The results that have been shared with citizens appear to have been selected with a bias, kind of cherry pick. For example, citizens have repeatedly voiced concerns about short-term rentals and that they do not support them. And yet, June City states that the results of the survey indicate that short-term rentals are supported regardless of many citizens' public opposition to, on this topic. This unscientific survey, and I had to do them. Many of you have also been in college and had to take classes where they taught you how to do, how to do scientific surveys. This really isn't very well constructed. The scientific, this unscientific survey should not be used in decision-making regarding city planning and policy. To do so puts issues such as citizens' property rights at risk.
Thank you. Next is Rick Watts.
Hello, Rick Watts. I would like to chime in on that. I spoke a long time ago about your survey, and after I did a couple of them, I didn't send any in. But I found that you changed the format three times on how to answer the question. You know, either in the circle or a box or whatever, but you changed it three times, and I got confused. But besides from that, that's got nothing to do with it. My time is short. What I'm here for is to address not, when I say all of you, you know, whoever's involved is in it for the ride. But sir, I'm extremely unhappy with the way you treat women. You downgrade them, you belittle them, you boo-hoo them, and I saw you do it. And it seems to me it's like, is this how you treated your wife? Is that how you treat women in general? To fucking do what you do to some of these ladies? Are those two old ladies with the speeding thing? You just pushed them to the side and said, nobody speeds them clearly, bro. So I'm very unhappy with you, just that alone. And this other character over here, the one that thinks that what we need to build a city is a jail first? It really old fart. I see, though, that you guys are trying to hire a goon to go around and enforce your rules. It's sad that everything you talked about to make money to build this city of yours is all costing the people that live here. How much burden do the people have to carry? I mean, and I'll fill this in real quick. On a lot of surveys, Oregon is a dying state. When the surveys that say Oregon is a good place to move is for old people with money. You know the population, the average population of Florence and out here is well into the 60s. You don't build towns with a bunch of old people. So that jail shit, that was a joke. And come on, I should, I should pre-read these things, you know, so I don't get so upset when I read them. But the, how much time do I left?
Forty seconds.
Okay, well, I have a suspicion there is an underbelly of cultists that may be working their way into our community and have had an agenda since the early 1800s of building and indoctrinating children. And when I think about that, and if you're interested in what I'm talking about, just look it up on YouTube or on Google a little bit. But it worries me. I think, what in the hell is happening to my little town where one guy thinks the first public building we ought to have is a goddamn jail? Because one of his friends got something stolen from him. Boo hoo. Get real, put in something they can use. And thank you, guys.
Thank you. And next, Paul and Linda Ross.
Good. No confidence. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
You too.
All right, next on the agenda is the mayor's report. I don't think I have much to report.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for your time.
Thank you. I guess my report is, I love living in this tiny little town with not too many public facilities or expenses and all state of debt. Next is our permit report. I think we have a copy here. Seems I have any questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll go on to new business. Election results. Lane County certified the results two weeks ago, Monday. We had 70 people, 70 names in the write-in. We had two spaces for write-in. There were over 70, but anyway, according to the election department, you go, the top three. Number one is Chris, who's on the ballot, and then number two was Larry Farnworth, and number three was Duke Wells. So the appropriate forms were sent to Larry Farnworth and Duke Wells. They've all been completed and returned. Our job is to verify they are residents of the city, and they are, so Chris and I and Larry and Duke will be, will take the oath of office the first meeting in January. Is that the eighth?
Yes.
Right? No gap point. And then, we need to basically reappoint Sean Grunden to the planning commission. He was appointed to a term that has, that just ended. So he is our recommended appointee. His information is in your packet, though he was reviewed about nine months ago, right? When I left the planning commission? 13 months or whatever.
Actually, no, I think in the summer.
More reasonable, okay. So anyway, we had just approved him a while back. Does anybody have any discussion on that? Or concerns?
Do we have any input from the council? Do we see input from the council?
He's the same planning commissioner, so he's fine. Yeah. So he's reappointed.
She hasn't had any feelings about it.
Certainly no negative feelings. She didn't say any, yeah. So with that, I would motion to reappoint Sean.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then the other discussion item we added were continued from the last meeting. We're watching.
I just wanted to ask before Joe Lee, what did you find out from Coast Guard?
Yep, so we can do our orders to do safety patrols, so we can bring people out with us, but we can't do that actual collection as part of Coast Guard. But we can provide facilities and all that, and people can just come onboard the equipment as guests.
Okay, now, can your lab do that test?
No, no, we, we got you. You're just a vehicle.
You can help with this.
And that's the sample, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Understood.
So I needed that information so we can figure out what we need to do.
Okay. All right, so that's not an action, right? That's just information.
I just need information, and then we'll get together.
All right, there is no need for an executive session this evening, correct?
No.
All right, anybody else? Short meeting, if you got through the agenda items. Let's start down here, Rich. Anything for the goons or?
I have nothing tonight.
All right, thank you. Chris? Tom?
Yeah.
This is it, man?
This is it.
Well, it's not really it, I mean, just for the council. Thanks for your, thanks for your services, yeah. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All right, Susan?
I just want to thank Tom and Joe for their service over the council. Appreciate it and appreciate all their ideas.
Yeah. With it.
Well, Sam, I'd love to appreciate each gentleman for doing their time about her community in regards to helping us on council and being an advocate for our place. I know that we previously discussed on a different topic in regards to phones, but I don't know if it can be addressed to the community members out there that may have a TNT to fight for a phone service between Dune City and Gardiner over the last couple of weeks. About a week, exactly. I was a first responder to an accident, and luckily there was no injuries. But when people are traveling on certain parts of the road, there are no cell phone service. So in the event of an accident, as we all know, that there are multiple accidents, sometimes per week, unfortunately. It is very difficult to summon someone's for 911, someone's for anybody. You can't really find anybody down. And if you're the first and only responder to an accident, you can't necessarily leave your person that is involved in the accident to go hike to a house or hike up the hill. So anybody that has, speak. You know, call, call where you need to call. Call Lane County, call wherever you make a noise because we desperately need phone service in those lone cellphone areas. Because if it was a true accident where someone was grossly injured, I would ask that the community stand behind and try to help us get phone service.
I appreciate that. I called AT&amp;T, Verizon, and Spectrum, and I used to be an AT&amp;T and Verizon customer. And the first thing they both did was look it up and say, you're not a current customer. And I told them I had AT&amp;T when I moved here, and the service was so bad at my house, I couldn't even call AT&amp;T to tell them they had dropped the service. I switched to Spectrum, and they talked to Verizon antenna. So we have a Verizon antenna that most of us can talk to. But yeah, when I called them, they said, you're no longer a customer. We really need customers to call and complain. And I got the coverage maps, and the sand dunes are covered. So they have the capability from the tower there on the hill as you go over the bridge. It goes all the way down the sand dunes. I get better service if I'm standing at Silkus Beach than I do in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And it's a big directional array. And you get the far end of Wobeen Lake. They're not even trying to broadcast across the lake. You know, we can have the antenna and coverage. So yeah, we really need people to call. And I know when you're at home, if you connect Wi-Fi, it really works when you're at home. But by driving down the street, right? You can't report an accident. If you're in an accident, you can't call anybody.
Even if you had the gentleman hat on start.
Exactly.
And on start was not even working.
It won't do anything, exactly. We've, we've complained to Verizon, and we've got a group that's been in this Dune City area for the 10 years that I've been here. And we have constantly called and constantly complained, and they do absolutely not. And Verizon's the best you can get for this area. And so they, they just don't even care. They're still taking your money. They, they know that you're going to pay it. And it's horrible.
I agree. I talked to Boomer, right? He's on the State Public Utilities Commission. Turns out, they don't have any regulatory juice over the cellphone companies. And I moved to Valpoils Office. They said they would look into what they could. Basically came back to the customer needs to complain. So yeah, we're kind of falling on deaf ears, but.
You know, but if we hide in numbers in calling each of our cellphone providers or our phone providers in the house, perhaps we can be a testimony for our neighbor and maybe be a little bit proactive. I don't know, but oh, that we need to call. You know, in California, they have phones every so many miles for emergency. Maybe that's what we need, I don't know. But I feel like if we all join together and we all start calling, I think it could make a vast difference.
Yeah, you're right.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, please.
So two and a half months ago, the Verizon signal in our house was substantially diminished. And so I contacted Verizon, and they have no knowledge as to why that might have happened. And their fix was to send me a Wi-Fi range extender, which they did free of charge, and I hooked it up in our house, and it was good for about one room. So then I just started doing some more digging, and I found out that, of course, Spectrum uses the Verizon signal. They just free broadcast it.
Yeah.
And so I discovered something called Mint Mobile, which is T-Mobile. And I made the switch from Verizon. Now my bill is about 20% what it used to be. And I have true 5G service now at my house. And when I'm out on the lake on a kayak, I can pick up, make a phone call, no problem. It's much better service. The actual number of bars that you see is weak, but what I'm getting is much stronger than anything I've had with Verizon in the last couple of months. So I bailed on Verizon. It's saving me a ton of money. And Mint Mobile is the name of the company that repackages the T-Mobile signal in a fashion where you get your hotspot, your 5G, your international calling in Canada and Mexico, and your unlimited data and your hotspot, all of that for about $30 a month. And so it's been a real game changer for us because there wasn't anything Verizon would have got to do to fix it.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Well, I just was curious if, as, since you are Dune City and you are the mayor, could we, as a city, get together a petition? You were asking, a lot of us have concerns about this. What if we all sign some kind of petition? Would that help if that was submitted to Verizon? A number of us have this problem. Problem with it.
It might, I mean, I, when I talk to them, and I used to talk to them through my own job all the time. And the first thing I want to know is, are you a customer? So I think frankly, it's the numbers. You know, when you look at the number of visitors, there's more people on the sand dune visiting over the course of a year than there are residents in Dune City. So they've, they've extended the service because most of those are big ticket customers from a big city. They come here to visit for the weekend, and they complain about their cell service. So I mean, it doesn't hurt. You know, the more, the more feedback I get, the first question they're going to ask is, you know, are you actually a Verizon customer? And maybe if we all said we might be, except the service isn't so hot, so.
Right. Perhaps, and before, I'm sorry, before you speak, sir, but I do agree with you, Ms. Jackson, that perhaps if we make a petition, we can use our higher, you know, Boomer, wherever we need to go to address our higher-up legislators to, hey, we have a valid point here. You cannot tell me we are the only place in this state that doesn't have this problem.
And we're not, and the Fed spent billions on FirstNet, and Verizon and AT&amp;T got the lion's share of that money to provide emergency responders or cellphone service. And, and you bring up the point, right? And that's the point I gave, where I said, this isn't just about me playing on the phone. This is about our residents. You can't call if you're in an accident on half the roads around here. You can't call, and the new iPhone has, similar to your car, you know, they can tell if you're in a crash if you suddenly decelerate. The new iPhone will call, but they can't call anybody. You know, when you're on a bike ride, it's like, can you hear me now? You know? Anyway.
I'm just trying to reach out for anything we can do for our citizens. Not only our citizens here, but it would be our neighbor, our family member. If it's a Florence person, someone that lived in Florida, it's what we need to do for our communities, communities in general.
Yeah.
So another thing that I noticed with my iPhone is that when I'm outside of T-Mobile's range, I have an SOS satellite system. So what I've heard is that within five years, all cellphone service will be satellite-based. But for now, I drove a 126 a day, and I had an SOS signal to make a 911 call the entire way.
Yeah.
Have you ever tried to use it, though?
Well, I don't usually call 911.
I can tell you, I had that, I had that on my phone on the way, and I tried it, and it still got nowhere.
She has a nurse, so she.
Luckily, I had a trauma bag in my vehicle.
All right, I wondered the same. I got a new phone, and it said, you can now send, send your location to somebody, you know, when it lost cellphone service. So I tried it one day in a national park, you know, way out in the national park. And I thought, well, I'll just try this. And I stopped, and I said, I texted my father and said, I'm ex. Never went through. So, and we're getting there.
It goes along the same thing as you can turn on your Wi-Fi calling. Well, Wi-Fi calling didn't work either, so. I had to maybe send their back signal.
So anyway, Joe. All right, so I prepared a little thing on my exit here. So I'll read it, which is there. It's with great respect and heartfelt gratitude that I address you tonight as I conclude my term as a member of Dune City Council. Serving this wonderful community has been one of the most rewarding experiences of mine. And that's true. It's, it's hard, but it is rewarding being able to sit up here and make decisions that you think are in the best interest for citizens of the city. Although I've lived, though I've lived in Dune City for only four years, it's become a place I deeply cherish, a city I'm proud to call home. And I have my families here. So other parts of my family moved down here also limited, which is great. Over the past year, I've had to honor alongside dedicated council mayors and our mayor who shared commitment of success in this community is truly inspiring. And contrary to what we hear sometimes and believe, it's a whole lot easier to sit out there than sit up here. But that's, we made those choices, right? But there's a lot of commitment, and I really respect everyone up here. I've worked with a lot of high-staffed professionals in the military and in my professional world, and everyone's top-notch up here. We may have different opinions, and I'll get to that. But differences of opinions are really good. That's healthy, that's what we need and something we've gotten away from in our country overall. And as I step down from this role, one will be with a call to action. Much as this speaks from the heart of what makes our community so strong, our urge to actively engage in ways that contribute positively to the growth and progress of Dune City. Our city is blessed with passionate and thoughtful residents who bring forth valuable ideas for its, in its future. However, as we work together, let us remember that our actions should be guided by collaboration, mutual respect, and constructive dialogue. It is essential that we approach differences of opinion with civility and grace, treating one another as our, as we ourselves would wish to be treated. And respecting diverse perspectives is not only the cornerstone of democracy, but it's a reflection of the values that would define us as a community. What Dune City needs, what Dune City needs most is a spirit of unity and shared willingness to work together for the common goal. I encourage you to participate whether by attending city council meetings, joining community events, or contributing to initiatives that help us shape our future. By doing so, give me part of the solution that strengthens our city and make it even a better place to live. I also encourage you to hold your elected officials accountable, but I ask you to do so with compassion and understanding. Leadership is a responsibility we all share, and together we can achieve remarkable progress. As leaving my position on the council, I remain committed to Dune City and its bright future. I'll continue to support our community in ways.
I'll continue to support our community in ways, or in any way I can, and look forward to witnessing its success in the years to come. Thank you for the honor and privilege of serving you as a council member. It's been an extraordinary journey, and I'll always carry this experience close to my heart. Thank you, and may Dune City thrive in unity and prosperity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. Do we still have a vote to see on the budget committee? I didn't really mean that last time.
I think we all heard you. We all heard you.
You know me, I like numbers.
I know, I know.
I do not like numbers, it's not too good. You recommend it. I need help. We'll reach out, thank you very much. And with that, we will adjourn, sorry, I didn't vote you for adjourn.
Someone else?
Thank you. Anyone want to say that? Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is? Six thirty, where is it? Thank you.